Going to start the meeting. It's August 12th, 2024, 6:03 PM, and I'm calling the Groton Board of Education Committee, the whole meeting to order. We did have to go full remote this evening as the meeting room is being set up for a primary tomorrow morning. So the the equipment placement there made it impossible for us to to use the room. So the first order of business, I'll entertain a motion to review the July 8th, 2024 meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Adrian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So the next order of business, if the superintendent could give us an update on the Assistant Superintendent and Business Manager position interview processes.
Yes, I'm happy to. The past couple of weeks and including this week, I've been very productive and busy. We will have second round interviews for the Assistant Superintendent on Friday in Beverly. Washington is joining us for that. And after that is really a third round with the board chair and myself and Lori Lapine. So we had really a wonderful group of candidates so far. And then the ones that we're bringing forth are the ones who are going that we really felt were the most viable, and they're the ones who are going to do a project for us and identify a project. So we've identified a project for them. And then for the business management positions, they're involved with first rounds, and Jen White is assisting with that this week. And then next week, we're hoping to go to the second rounds. And you know, really, my goal is to have someone selected to bring to the board in both situations by the end of, you know, in the next week or so. I don't, I can't promise that there'll be free other positions to start the school year with us. But I'm very hopeful that we will be able to get them soon and have them in their seats ready to go. So that's where we are with those two positions. Were there any questions or? Jay, did you?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Does anyone have any questions about that process?
How many people, Susan? Oh, I'm sorry.
And then Bev.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious to know, like, what's the process as far as who's determining which board members get to sit down on which interviews?
Well, we just, people had asked, requested. So you know, Jen White was part of Finance and Facilities and was very interested in doing that process. I don't know if she's doing first rounds and second rounds, but we could certainly have someone in addition for second rounds for the finance, but we're all set for. You know, we've got Beverly coming in to help us with the second rounds with our Assistant Superintendent.
Dean is also doing second round for.
Oh, okay. So Dean is scheduled for second round. Okay.
Yeah, I remember discussing it in a meeting. You know, where we were all talking about having board members involved in the interview process, and I expressed support of that idea and and interest in being part of it, but I don't recall ever being requested or saying like, all right, officially send an email or was I supposed to officially submit some sort of like statement saying I wanted to be part of one of those processes?
Well, I I was under the impression that I was part of that committee. I'm dismayed, at least, say the least.
Well, I am just, I've just been, I'm not even participating in this round for the finance. I did participate for the assistant, but I will be in the second round. So HR really handles all of that, gathering that information. So I don't know if if they worked with Joyce or how that all transpired, but we did get a name for each of those.
It was, it was the Assistant Superintendent that I was supposed to be part of. So again, I'm dismayed.
Yeah, I just think it would have been, you know, a little bit more inclusive to like send out an all call at the time that you're collecting names or trying to get people lined up for these slots. Send out one email saying, okay, now, you know, now's the time to submit your name if you really want to be part of the interview process. And you know, what position would you like to be helping with the interviews? That would have been a little more inclusive and above board.
Well, I don't think there was anything, you know, that wasn't above board. We don't typically have a host of board members. So we really chose to have one for each of the processes. So you know, for each of the rounds.
That was not my impression.
So I'm going to recognize Bev was next. And then if I'm getting it in the proper order, Jen, Matthew, and then Adrian.
Thank you, Jay. How many candidates do you have in the second round, Susan, for each position?
I I don't know how many will be in the finance round. I think we had six viable candidates that they're doing in the first round, which was much better than the first time we posted. And for the for the number for Assistant Superintendent, I think there were 12 that we, you know, really thought could be possible viable. And then I think there's about six that are coming for the second round interviews.
Thank you.
So Jen, then Matthew, then Adrian.
I'm starting late. And I'm involved in the first round interview. So it's tomorrow and Wednesday. And like Susan said, there's either like six or seven candidates that are being reviewed. I believe Dean is like on the second round. I believe because like
Jay had said.
Um, you were on the finance because we're in the finance committee. And I know Bev wasn't involved in the finance side, but I think Bev, right, you're involved in the Assistant Superintendent interview? Is that right?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, that's how I, that's how I was figured, was told.
And I think it's based on the strengths of the board members too, like you have a good finance background. So does Dean, you know? So you look at that also.
Matthew?
Good, I'm not needed. I did not, nor was I able to, or would I be able to serve on a review either first or second round. So I have the say, say down south, no dog in this fight. But I do recall very clearly that Dr. Ackerman asked to be involved. And I do recall very clearly that there was a broader discussion about greater board involvement in this process. And when I hear that it was decided, I hate passive voice, it was decided. I think the board was very clear, not by a formal vote, but the consensus of the board was very clear that we wanted more board involvement. And I think it's not too late to add Dr. Ackerman to the review of the Assistant Superintendent. There's nothing to stop us from doing that. And that's what I would like to ask us to do. Thank you.
Adrian?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiment of some others. I thought there was going to be a more word and I did not realize that these interviews were happening right now. So I don't know what the process is or if there's a process. But I look forward to, you know, to learning about it. So thank you.
Ian?
Yeah, I just, again, want to express my displeasure with the whole unroll, you know, the way this was rolled out. And I would ask the chair, like, what was your role in this? And, you know, what did you get out of the last meeting or the meeting when we discussed board participation? And you know, a whole lot of us expressed interest in being part of it. And again, there was no all call saying things are going to start rolling now. So as the Chair of the Board, what was your role in this selection process?
I contacted anyone who had an interest in being on these. And they are ongoing. And we will you know, determine, you know, who can attend during the time that the interviews are taking place. And find room for anybody else who who has an interest.
Yeah, well, you did not contact me in that context.
Yeah, no, I people contacted me and had an interest and the interviews were set up. I thought everybody knew that this was an ongoing process. But you know, we'll we'll get more people involved and we'll get it corrected. We're still at the beginning of it.
All right. Well, I would definitely get, again, this officially stating my interest in being included in some level of this process at some point with an interview. And I'm not in particular for the personnel, although I think Assistant Superintendent might be more in my wheelhouse as far as like policy and procedure and that sort of thing goes.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have to be careful of, you know, obviously, we can't have three or four board members, you know, in the room all at the same time. But you know, there's certainly time to include more people in the process if it's into their schedule during the day.
And do we have other vacancies that we're going to be interviewing for? In the administration level?
No, these are the two that we have right now.
So we don't have a vacancy in the literacy coordinator position?
We do, but it's internal. So we probably will have an internal candidate. So that's been posted, but I don't think it's closed yet. So we haven't moved forward with anything yet.
Right. So there is a vacancy in that level. Okay. Well, you know, again, I think any opportunity to include board members in these processes is would be good. And it'd be good also to be even handed with it. Spread it around. Thank you.
Adrian?
Yeah, one, Jay, you might, do we, is the board actually going to be weighing in on on any of these candidates in a meeting? As far as voting or consensus or anything like that?
No, your superintendent selects staff. You hire me to select staff, but certainly you, you know, there's opportunity with the, you know, members who are on the committee to be able to weigh in.
Could I just jump in real quick? Adrian, the only person the board hires is the superintendent. We don't, we don't usually interview anybody else but the superintendent.
This is actually extending the process more than typically happens, but we knew that, you know, there was this request. So, but I I'll try to see tomorrow who with, I'll check in with HR to see who's on the list and I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, I I just asked because just going back a couple of months to Phil, I remember we were, there was some talk about waiting for the board of that town to vote on him or something like that in a in a board meeting. And that that's kind of where that that question came out of. But separately, if we, I I might suggest, or or if there is more than more board members that show interest that might constitute a quorum, maybe we can just have non-participating members that are allowed to attend just to have some some understanding of the process.
Well, I know that we, when we have the final selection for both the Business Manager and the Assistant Superintendent, there will be a meeting where we formally introduce, and you'll have a chance to to meet them at that point, too. So, and that will be hopefully sooner than later. Like I said, the goal is really to get them kind of in the seat as soon as we can to get the start, school year started. That's my goal.
All right, good.
Right. Any other questions? If not, I believe Ray is online to give us an update on finances.
Hi, everyone. In your packet is a copy of the finance report that I had given to the Finance Subcommittee. And most of that, most of, most all of our encumbrances have been pretty much taken care of, and we're working very diligently on the last of the encumbrances right now. It's validating. Do we or do we not have a liability there? So we are, we are working on that, moving forward with it. Also, within your packet, you'll notice that right now, we're down to about $243,000, and I'm rounding up a few hundred dollars there. So we're, again, diligently working to see if we can clear any additional encumbrances to get it as close to zero as possible prior to the end of the fiscal year.
And Ray, can I interject that that 243 is an interesting number? I had said this at Finance and Facilities because it's really almost on the money, on the, at the same level as our property damages net value. So after all of the, you know, what insurance has been paid and we've been paid back, that's kind of where we sit between the cybersecurity and the floods and everything else that we incurred this past year, something every month.
So yes, you are correct. Thank you. We also, in your packet, I support, there's three pages of a new test report. I'm still tweaking it. That I'm going to try to get it down to a page, page and a half. But you'll see on there that there is a a new finance report I'm trying to send out. And I asked the Finance Subcommittee to take a look, tweak it, send me their comments. And then we'll see if we can incorporate any of those comments within it. So, and what else have we got here? The audit, we're moving along quite well with the audit. We've sent them most everything that they've requested to date. So I don't believe we're behind there. We've also, I have a meeting with the auditor all day on Thursday. They're coming into my office, we'll be sitting down and reviewing different processes and programs. One of the things we'll be looking at also is some of the IT segments as as well. So overall, so far, things are going well and really, that that's not, not bad. We're aiming for, as I said in the Finance Subcommittee meeting, we're aiming for the August 21st date to have all grants reconciled. They need to be pushed over into e-finance from the E grants file, which is technically the ED 141, and that'll do an automatic upload into the e-finance once we get them reconciled. We're probably about, I'm going to say a good 75% of the way there. And we've, there's, if I remember correctly, there's two full pages horizontally with with e-grants that need to be reconciled. So we do take advantage of the grants. There are a lot of grants out there. So and Groton is one of those organizations that takes full advantage of the grant. So I kudos to them. Other than that, I did, you'll see on there, I did speak with Trumble on the on the, what's the operational review process? I'm going to hold that, my comments on that, because I believe Jay wants to speak about it with, about it a little later. Okay, if there's any questions, be more than willing to answer them.
So Ray, I just want to congratulate you and and those in your office for, you know, whittling down the deficit to the point where it's my understanding that we can actually close the year with the encumbered funds. And unless there's some surprise that comes down between now and then that we will not need to pursue the we will not need to pursue the supplemental from the town for the the prior period. And so I appreciate you're you're working through all that and getting that under control.
Well, it's taken a lot of hard work from the entire team. So.
I'd like to reiterate that. It has been a lot of hard work and a lot of collaboration, not only with our team, but also with the town. I know that we were able to secure some of the military impact aid for special education. So that's one of the things that helped us to draw down. So I I did thank John Burt for working with me on that, or working with us so that our colleagues here in central office also work with with their colleagues at the town. So I just, I really appreciated that. I also have said out loud, I appreciate my administrators, my principals, they really held a tight line when we knew there were challenges we faced all year long. And so they really recognized and prioritized their site budgets and were very careful with field trips and everything. Kids still took field trips, but they also looked to our partners at, you know, Project O and NASS to get some support too from them. So I would say that everybody in monitoring overtime, making sure there wasn't overtime and monitoring time cards to be very, very careful. So I really commend the entire team. And I appreciate this board too, being so cognizant of this and being kind of right there helping with that. And you're just, you know, paying attention to it and understanding that it has been a very challenging year. But if we got through it, we did it better together. And that was my theme for the year. So thank you all.
That takes care of last year.
Yes. Well, one step at a time, but that's so I'm going to recognize Matthew and then Adrian.
Thank you, Jay. Part of the packet was the memorandum to Jay from Mr. Duke, Attorney Dugus. I was going to ask if we had any movement on that, but I thought I understood Susan to say, if I misunderstood you, please correct me, Susan, that there has been movement and some of these funds have been forthcoming?
Yes.
Get an update on that? Could we get an?
For military children with with special needs. So.
Where do we stand on the balance of the impact aid?
I'm not sure. I think the attorneys are working on that together right now. So, yep. But we've certainly collaborated with the town with those special needs monies. So that really is very helpful. Yeah, very much appreciated. Yep.
Adrian, and then Ian.
Adrian, you're muted.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
And now I'm all right, there we go. So I just have a little bit of a process question. And and this is going back to like looking at this this budget that we're hopefully wrapping up quickly. When we are over in a category, and so I'll just use purchased services for example. How, I was under the understanding that that money needs to be moved from another category to pay for that. How does that happen?
That, you're talking about budget or you're talking about expenditure?
Well, it's budgeted so that that line item was budgeted at just over a million dollar purchaser services. It was 2.47 million. And then we went over. So so if it if it goes over on the budgeted amount, how does, how does that get paid?
That still gets paid because we're looking at bottom line net. So overall, we could request that we do budget transfers to offset the current budget and remove it from several other lines to increase the budget. That creates some, a lot of extra work on my part and your part. And what it also does, it doesn't give me a true picture of where we where we were budgeted and our true expenditures, because it may be a blip that year. So I look at the bottom line overall. And then I will adjust next year's budget accordingly. So next year, you make, instead of a million, you may, I may be requesting a million and a half dollars in a specific line if we see trends going that way. So I use it so I know where my shortcomings are. But if part of your process down the road is to transfer and backfill budget items to balance the budget that way, it can be done. Both methods are acceptable.
I think that's the way that it has been done in the past too, Ray.
That you've transferred budget.
No, that we do not, that we want to know what the actual is. We always look at the actual versus what has been budgeted. And that helps us inform even the following years when we're.
Correct. And it's, it's more, it's more cognitive as to where you're going to be and 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 how you got there. That that's my spin on it. I've also worked for a district where every time I had a board of finance meeting, I mean, a board, a board of ed meeting, we had lines of transfers because they insisted that we backfill that line with a transfer from a line that had a surplus to a line that had, that did not. So I, but we had much more staff there than we have here. I'm not, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm not bored.
All right. So maybe I was just mistaken between expenditures and in the budget. But so it would be board approval for changing that bottom line budget number, but not transfers.
I would transfer, for example, let me look at it. Let's say I gotta find one. Let's say I wanted to transfer from the snow trash and snow removal. They had 21,000 extra dollars. And let's say I needed to clear the computer network services deficit of 9,800. I would ask for a transfer of 9,843 from the snow and budget removal and move it into the computer network services budget. That would wipe your deficit and still leave me a little surplus in the snow removal budget. You know what I mean? It would zero out your deficit to balance. But then again, it may come up again next month. So that that's why, that's why it's, it's you're better off leaving it alone. You'll know, you know where your surpluses are, you know where your your deficits are. And it's much easier to balance your budget in the end.
And we only really know the story until really we get through the summer and we really can cognitively see all those accounts clearing out and the encumbrances, you know, can, you know, being taken in and completed. So.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying. I just, I was just under a different, a different impression early on, but this is my first year. So but yeah, I, I, my question would be, you know, what role does the board have and what we actually spend in these categories? Because you know, if if a new program was rolled out or something like that, that the board and board hadn't approved, it was just inside in the administrative level. You know, money could be spent on it, it would come from another category presumably that the board might not know about. So I guess I'm just, you know, wondering how the money gets moved around, but I understand how it's been going.
I can, I can do, I can do within specific lines, let's say a salary line. I could move within, without board approval, I can move within the salary line, a transfer of the expenditure to correct the 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 transfer, the expenditure transfer. What I can't do without board approval is a budgetary move. So there's
salaries to supplies or vice versa.
And I can't modify the budget. Once you approve that budget, that's the board's budget. I can't move that without your permission.
But you could overspend. I'm sorry. I was just gonna say. But but you could overspend a, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I was just gonna say. Yeah, just to play devil's advocate, but you could overspend a line item and then just move it in later. Like without the board really knowing. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Normally, if there's an over expenditure on something, for example, like let's say healthcare or transportation or special services, we're going to bring that to your approval. That would be part of my narrative that I would supply, ju- telling you how, what, when and where and why.
And we would see it in the object code summary. That's where we really picked up on all those challenges early in the year, remember? You know, you guys came in December, so which you learned very quickly like how this all works. So you know, we were recognizing things as we, you know, from the beginning of the year that were going to be challenging.
All right. Well, thank you for that explanation.
If you ever have any questions, you can call my office too. I mean, I'm I'm always available to respond.
All right, all right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to recognize Ian and then Jen.
Well, thank you. Yeah, um, just to circle back to the uh discussion about the um cooperation with the town manager's office and that set of things. Are we going to have a follow-up meeting with our attorney to kind of close out, close the circle on the conversations that have been going on with the town attorney? Because I am aware that the town council is uh having a an executive session is on the agenda, a possible executive session, I guess, is on the agenda for tomorrow night regarding board of ed budget considerations and attorney's opinions is what's described in the agenda. So they're talking about it on their end. I'm wondering what are we going to do on our end? Has there been any evolution?
My understanding is that Floyd met last week, and so yes, we will ask him for an update on on uh any progress in that area.
So we don't have a meeting scheduled as a as an agenda item to do it specifically? Where we can ask questions?
Uh, not not at the moment, but we need to. My understanding is that they're still talking.
Yes, that's what I understand.
And once they come to a resolution, then yeah, we will schedule something, you know, with Floyd based on his availability to bring us an update, or you know, he can submit something in writing, and then we can follow up. So my understanding is a little evolving.
Thank you.
Uh, Jen?
Um, this is just going back to Adrian's question. And with the budget being held steady, we haven't done it this year, you know, because we're like trench and like but we could have or ask of um you know, the business office or the business manager to create like a latest estimate or a forecast to go next to the budget. So where we anticipate additional expenses, like you are mentioning, we can sort of have that and make it more like of a formal item um in our um monthly reporting. But um that could be like sort of like future state or um whenever the new person gets hired, that could be like a request that we could put in. It's just a thought like as you're talking that came to mind.
You could put it in, and I fully understand where you're coming from, like a forecasted uh requirement or forecasted liability. Uh, but that's where your encumbrances should come in. That that should be party. That is your forecast. Uh, in reality, your encumbrance tells you that you've got an open liability sitting there. And you'll see in the new uh budget coming up, there's very few salaries encumbered yet because we were we're waiting to finish out this year because we have to again, e-finance is a little funky. Um, other softwares, you can close it out early. And I could put all my encumbrances in starting July one for the upcoming fiscal year. I can't do that in e-finance until I close out the fiscal year twenty four, then we can load in. All so my first week of September and second week of September, my payroll department's going to be going wacky. Uh, they're going to be literally uploading all the encumbrances for all the salaries. So that's why at the fight board of at the finance subcommittee, I mentioned that I don't think we'll have every encumbrance entered until probably the third or fourth week of September. Just from my past experiences and particularly with the nuances with the operating system. So
How important that is?
Oh, God, yes. Oh, yeah. But that tells us where we're at. I have them loading in. Um, anything we can put in on a purchase order right now, we are loading in. Um, so that and you you'll notice some of that in the uh that sample sheet that I sent off, you'll see some of the encumbrances already sitting in there for things that we put in purchase orders for. So that would that's encumbering uh those liabilities that we have out there. But that's that's technically your projection throughout the year, and we work and we work those down. Now, having said that, sometimes we find savings even though we've encumbered something. For example, I think we're over encumbered on our transportation lines, but that's based upon the number of children, maybe uh some special needs children that possibly got moved or transferred. And so we're validating some of those POs right now to see if we can reduce that that overall encumbrance to close out for the rest of the fiscal year. So we may have a little savings there. There may be a little savings, as I've stated all along. Electricity and utilities, I think, may be overstated. So that's where we're digging deep right now to make sure all everything's paid. If it's paid, we're going to be closing out those lines. So there there are certain things that we we need, we need to validate before we can close them out. I don't want to short shorten the liability that we have. Even though things are looking pretty good right now, I may get hit with a fifty thousand dollar surprise tomorrow. I had no clue what's coming in.
Think it's a matter of that, um, Ray. I think it was just a matter like before you came. Um, there was probably no formalized um procedure on encumbrances. So this is something new and like where we're starting to collect data and get good information. So it was just something that I thought I would mention. So
I think there's always been encumbrances, but Ray definitely was able to do a very close look and work with the staff. Jen, so I think things have, you know, he's actually gone through procedures with them and cross training in the short time he's been here. Um, and it's been necessary because we have been shorthanded at times. So um, you you're right. I really do commend him for the work he's done. But there's more work to do, we know.
Good, yeah, there's plenty to do.
But I'm just saying we're in a better spot now than when like um, all of us new board members started.
Thank you.
All right. And speaking of encumbrances, Ray, my understanding is that your team is reaching out to suppliers and making sure that we have everything so that we're not getting an invoice six months late, for example?
Correct. We've we've been doing that, particularly in the uh uh special needs area. And it because those are normally where we get surprises, uh that area, a few other areas that we're looking at. Uh, again, transportation, we're validating those right now. I had um Nicole taking a good heart look at that, as well as again, utilities, uh there should be, there should be a little more savings in the utilities area. I'll be very honest with you. I I think we're still overstated there. So I have them, I'm beating a horse right now if you can't tell, just to for lack of better terms. But gut feel tells me that I think we're overstated in several lines there. A couple of them are valid, but I think we're overstated. I think we'll be able to get some of it down even further.
And I know you've been meeting with the auditors. Uh, do we have a schedule uh of milestones for the audit um for this year so that um
I can actually issue you some milestones. I'm confirming that Thursday, so I can send, I can send that off.
That'd be great.
Yeah, if you want to share it with the entire board, um, please. I I think it's important for us to understand what this process looks like, because last year it kind of snuck up on us. And so if we can set these milestones out in advance and know whether we are meeting them or not, um, I think the whole board, well, I I know I would be. I assume there are others that would would like to see, you know, where we are uh with that process.
I I believe we're ninety five to a hundred percent on schedule to what they've requested for some for uh testing material. So and then we're also go have also updated the four or five procedures that they've asked me to take a look at. Those have been updated. Those are internal processes. Um, so though they received the last of those that today. So overall, and then we're going to tweak the planning process on Thursday when Stephen is over. And um I I've asked my staff to make sure that they're all available on Thursday so that if there's any questions that we can run through it. So other than that, um, it's to me, it's the normal process. Our goal is to wrap up between ten one and eleven one uh so that they can get back on target to submit to the state by I believe they've changed the date no later than two one. It needs to be filed. Normally, it's twelve thirty one. But the date, and this was based on a meeting that I attended with the state last Thursday morning conference. The latest is uh now two one, I'm pretty sure. I'm ninety nine point nine percent positive that the latest that they can file without a request for an extension is now two one. So.
Yeah, and Ray, I'd like to be available to meet them too on Thursday. So check in with, so at least I can say hello.
Okay, oh, definitely. Yep. I'd probably leave with you for a few hours if you like.
Oh, sure.
All right. We we look forward to hearing about that. I also want to point out to the board that I asked that um a attachment uh go out with the packet with regard to some of the work that the ad hoc budget procedure committee has been doing, so we can see some of the things that they've been discussing. Um, looks like they're proposing, you know, a little more aggressive timeline, um, you know, for the budget preparation. Um, and again, this is not, this is certainly not anything set in stone, but I thought everyone would would like to know what direction they're going in. I think they're also next going to be tackling the actual uh presentation of the budget, how how it will look. And so I just want to say thank you to them. I know they've been working diligently, meeting all summer uh on this important project. And of course, the board as a whole will have a final say on um, you know, exactly how this will come together. But it's the first time in many years that there's been a comprehensive sort of analysis, um, you know, of this process. And of course, we don't really want this to become the overwhelming work of the board, but it is a very important function of the board. And so thank you for everybody who has been involved with that.
Jay, I don't know if you noticed, but Ian's hand has been raised.
Oh, okay. I thought that was from before. I'm sorry. Uh, yes, Ian, did you want?
Yeah, I just uh wanted to thank you for sharing that out. And I'm just prefaced that most of the stuff that's in the timeline is just sort of a general overview. Some of it is all perfunctory, just noting so that um, you know, all the board is aware of what's happening inside the administration as the budget evolves. And um, so I don't know, is there some way we could project that up on the screen or are we going to have that as a more defined um agenda item?
Yeah, I thought we would. Yeah, we thi- this this agenda was sort of already set, and unfortunately we thought we were going to be in room eleven tonight with all of the ability to sort of project and that sort of thing, but um we discovered that wasn't available. So I I don't know. Do we have any way to?
I don't know if um they have the document. I I have it hard copy only right now.
I don't have it on my computer.
You give me a minute, I can pull it up and project it.
Now, is this going to be a discussion item? Do you have to add that to your agenda or?
Well, I'm kind of using the loose um uh agenda that, you know, thi- this this does have to do with finances.
Okay.
We're not going to do a deep dive into this. We just
Just to showcase.
You, yeah. And I I do, uh, you know, thi- this will be a future agenda item uh along with, you know, the final report of the of the committee.
While Ian's doing that, Ray, you may want to add that we are going through an upgrade of our financial software with e- with e-finance. Did you want to speak to that at all?
Yes, um, I did briefly mention it at the uh finance subcommittee me- meeting. The uh e-finance is being upgraded becau- uh to the latest version, starting ten one. And it's going to take about six weeks, so it's going to carry us through uh mid-December in all probability. It includes some training for additional functionality. Um, we're also looking at a uh a a new piece of budget software that they have that uh is owned by e-finance to possibly add to it. So there there's several different uh aspects going here. We're not sure if we're going to add that piece of software or not. Um, but it is, it's on, it's on the table right now. So
Right. And that's going to be an all hands on deck. We'll need to learn this and get up to R and then with transitioning of staff in the meantime. So just keep that in mind.
And on top of that, prep a new budget.
And yeah, that's true.
Yes.
Well, um
Okay, thank you, Ian. We see it.
Excellent. Um, well, thank you, Ray, for that update on the uh on the software situation. Um, and again, I I think, uh, yeah, for next week, if we could have a uh an agenda item for like sort of a uh ad hoc budget procedure committee update in general, and then we can kind of springboard out of there to kind of because the software stuff was something that we we have talked about there and that we identified in the last budget cycle and it so definitely want to kind of just put a bookmark on that.
Yeah, I got it down.
Thank you. Um, now, uh, so yeah, for this timeline, uh like, we just wanted to kind of share it with everyone to kind of get the sense there's because some of the preparation stuff and and this may be a thing. At one point, we thought about uh trying to come forward with like a full comprehensive report, but that may be too logistically uh impractical uh for some of the more imminent concerns. And so we decided to kind of try to bring stuff forward piece by piece as we felt it was ready to share and that we wanted to seek uh input from the committee as a whole. Um, and the timeline is kind of there at that point now. That was our we had a vote at the last meeting, and I just wanted to kind of get it out here so the superintendent could get a look at what we're looking at and and the rest of the board members could start thinking about it as well. And, you know, we could have the official discussion next week about it. But uh, but the idea was just to try to, you know, um, move some things around so that the the board could get a look at the superintendent's draft budget earlier and have a little more time with it. And the other um significant change would be to model our deliberation process similar to how the town council and the uh RTM do it with the uh extended cow meeting uh for a budget review session where it's it's recessed at the end of each meeting and then, you know, restarted uh on the next scheduled meeting date. And having a more formalized way of going through the budget to to uh transfer it as as we transition from the superintendent's proposed budget to the board-approved budget. So uh I thank the chair for sharing that out and um, like I said, I look forward to having a more detailed discussion next week as an official agenda item, and I would like that agenda item to include like sort of just broad strokes, budget procedure committee update, updates.
Can we scroll down on that just so the board members can see? I mean, we all got it, but just to see October, November.
Yeah, October, November is kind of like where a lot of stuff happens. And um, with the idea of having, um, well, uh Mike Whitney came up with the idea of trying to like roll over like the last year's budget, things that were you know, baked in costs, like yeah, non-negotiables, like contracts, raises, all that stuff, like trying to look at the budget strategically and try to arrange our our budget so that, one, we get a look at it sooner. So like things that Our budget so that, one, we get a look at it sooner, so like things that. Really can't be chan- changed would just be included, and then. I have like a note sheet of anticipated changes with. Possible ranges of those changes, just so we all can kind of start internalizing what's happening. Earlier. And then. Um. So DHs and P's, department heads and principals, uh, I didn't put a key on this, but. That that's what those stand for. And the idea would be to have like the draft budget in hand, uh. In the hands of the individual board members, um, the superintendent's draft budget in the hands of individual board members by. Uh, the end of November. At the latest, so that. You know, through the week, uh, through the weeks of December, we can. Um. All individually kind of familiarize ourselves with the budget. And start preparing our questions and submitting our questions to an FAQ sheet. Cause that did prove to be an efficient. Manner of consolidating questions and board members could check to see if something that they're interested in knowing had already been asked. Um. You know, and then uh. The other big change would be a proposed, uh, uh, again, this is all proposed, but we were discussing. Um. Was looking at opening up that cow budget review session. In January. And having it. Having some public presentations and and public comment early in the process, um. And then. You know, come up with a calendar of like how we're gonna go through the. All the object codes and then um. You know, go right into February, uh, if we need to. But with the goal of trying to. Get to a final vote. Um. At least a week before the final deadline of February twenty-eight.
Okay. But my idea was that, you know, I, we shared this, so now board members will have a few days uh. Before we we look at it officially next week.
Right, and and I just wanted to note that I did leave blanks. So.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, so I'm I'm encouraging people. You know, with our committee, we took sort of a kitchen sink approach, like. Every idea was discussed and pretty much, you know. Without objection, we we threw the ideas in there unless they're contradicting each other, and then we had to kind of determine, okay, which one. Would we, would we think takes precedence, um, but overall, like I I really wanted to have a. Very inclusive process with this uh. With this idea and and have the cow. The committee of the whole really. Get a good look at all the ideas that are out there and 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 then also put theirs into it. And uh, and maybe we can get to our, get ourselves to a good place.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to you and to Jen and to uh. Um. Mike Whitney.
Mike.
For working on this committee. And we look forward to talking.
Right, and let me just throw a little credit, uh, it was Jen White actually too. Who uh, who was the one who who really planted the flag in this, in in the sand saying. Let's go for a week ahead of time at least. Uh, so that we're not running up. Against the deadline and and having a a time crunch of vote. And then, you know, burning the midnight oil to. Print pages and bind books.
Yeah, cause it is a burden on the business manager and their office to uh. To plug all those final numbers in, especially if there's any changes, so.
Right.
It is a good idea.
And with the world of digital, not everybody may need a printed copy, but some people may want that. And I understand that, but digitally, we can get it out sooner. Even so, some of that, those original timelines, if we get really swamped, once we get the numbers in right. We can possibly get it out digitally first, and then anybody who needs a printed copy, we can get that.
Mm-hmm. All right. Well, I look forward to seeing uh. And discussing the rest of the, your work and ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing that.
Appreciate it, thank you all.
Is there anything else? Um, that anybody has to to ask Ray before we move to the next agenda item? All right, hearing uh and seeing none, um. So the next item is a discussion um about an operational review and um. I I think you're all aware that we that we went through the annual. Um, audit process. Um, and. The audit was clean. For the town and the Board of Ed. Um, the auditors did state that. Um, along the way, they have some general recommendations that they made with regard to um. Uh. The vendor file at the Board of Ed, which Ray took care of. Pretty much immediately, um. They're recommending to a lot of their clients that they do a risk assessment review. Um. A cybersecurity review. Um. And there were also discussions of. Uh, an operational review. Um, now, first of all, Ray has been doing. The beginnings of an operational review as as someone coming in from the outside with a lot of experience and putting. Policies and procedures into effect. Uh, in the business office and and for that, you know, we're very grateful, the new person. Um. Will um. Have. Uh, similar. Uh, experience and expertise. In continuing that process. Um. But I think. We just need to. Keep ourselves open to the idea that once the new person is in place. That there may be the need to bring someone in. Uh, as a third party. Just to make sure that we are. Um. Uh. Adhering to the best practices. Um. With regard to to finance. And. One of the other things that that I think an operational review might. Uh, help with is whether or not we're properly staffed. And make sure that we have the number of people we need in there. Given the great number of grants that that we do, it's it, we can't really be compared apples to apples with with. Just any other district and um. So. You know, if we bring someone in who has expertise in the staffing. Uh, part of it, we could use that. Um. As justification if we need to to add some staffing there, so. Uh, tonight was not meant to be a. Comprehensive uh discussion, though Ray, you know, does have some opinions. About how an operational review uh went and trumbled, but I would just ask everyone to keep an open mind. Uh, that this is a tool. Uh, that we. Uh, may want to consider. And and again, not. Until we have a business manager in place. Um. And I see it as a way to sort of. Uh, get the business office, um. You know. Off to a good start with new leadership. And and making sure that all the best practices are in place.
And to have that transition time so that Ray can work with this new person, I think is an essential ingredient in all of this. And Ray is actually documenting these practices that are being tightened up and put in place, so to have that transition, and I want to. Find someone who has their own ideas as well of ways that they've seen it work in the past, I think that lends itself to. Best practices as well. So um, I'm looking forward to, you know. Working closely. With both Ray and the new hire. And really, you know, structuring this in the best way that we can.
And like I said, I think Ray has sort of jump-started this process.
Yes, yeah, absolutely have.
And so, you know. That would be, that could be a good starting point.
And and like, and like we spoke about earlier, I think one of the, one of the key factors is um baselining where we're at. Being able to and then being able to move forward and having the staff involved. Um, and having them own the process, um, without them taking ownership of it. If you bring somebody in and they're gonna say you need to do this, this, and this. Uh. Jay, I've seen it fail, uh, just my own. In my own experiences, so they need to be part of this, they need to take ownership of it. Um, just like I took ownership of the position when I came on board. Uh, Susan and and the board gave me free rein, you go do what you need to do to get things right. And and we we've succeeded as a team and that and I don't want to see the team. Take the brunt of it, that and I, and it's not. And I'm not saying it's not coming out the right way, I know that, but um. I'm I'm defensive of my team right now, let's put it that way.
Right, and I.
Well, I think.
The tool. That we. May need to call upon. Um.
But I think giving time to get the person situated, to take a look at it, to work with Ray and the team is really um needed.
That'll be key. Cause if you don't have buy-in there, you. Jay, you could shoot yourself in the foot, and that's just my. The board could shoot themselves in the foot.
I want to think I hope that we do discuss with any candidates is we're open, honest and transparent about. The idea that we're looking at this and see what um. You know, uh, see what they think and and see what kind of buy-in. Uh, they have um or experience with this kind of process, I I just want to get the conversation started. Um, because it did come up through the. The audit process and. You know, I think we need to be. Very open to continuous improvement. You know, everywhere, including.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no doubt about it, and um, none of us are too old to learn, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but then I've seen old guys. Think they know more than they do and. I'll stop.
All right, I'm gonna recognize uh Bev.
Thank you, Jay. And the only thing I would have to say is that I would hope that the Board of Education pays for this review and at the town. So we are in control of the review. So I hope that we will all agree to pay for it from the Board of Education's budget.
How much of a budget do you have? There is nothing in the budget for this.
Right, well, uh, uh, a lot has to do with the scope. Uh, and. You know, um, and and what it is gonna cost and what the cost benefit is, so.
I do know the person that did the uh. Review and trumble. Uh, spent the better part of ten months there. Uh, ten months worth of work, now I don't know what their total cost was, I didn't ask. Um, I probably should have, but if you're talking a consultant for ten months worth of work. I mean, you have their onsite time, then you've got their backroom time, um, and most consultants are. Several hundred dollars an hour nowadays, so. Thirty, forty hours a week, and you can add it up quickly, so just be careful, that's all. Words of wisdom or caution, whichever way you want to look at it.
That, thank you, Ray, Ian.
Uh, thank you, um, yeah, I just wanted to to uh. Align my comments with Bev there, I I think uh, that that is a key element that, you know. This is something that I think the board needs to do for itself. Um, and you know, in a lot of ways, it it just makes good procedural sense. Um, you know, coming from the maritime industry, you know, you don't take over. Command of a vessel without thoroughly inspecting the state of that vessel, um, and. Also, like, you don't take over a watch from another mate. On deck until you satisfy yourself that, you know, the 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 ship is in good order and on the correct course. Um. So, you know, I just think it's a matter of good practice that, you know, there's been a a big turnover in the board this year and um. There's a lot of us that have had. Um. Different levels of concern and interest as far as like. Trying to figure out, you know, how we can do fulfill a mission to the best. Possible capacity. And um, to that end, and I think an operational review would be, would be a a. A confidence building opportunity. And um. Now, I can understand Ray's concerns about uh having a third party involved, but I can also. Understand the value of having a third party in- involved, um. One, to to save on staffing. Uh, you know, because Saff is gonna have the regular operations to do alongside this operational review. Uh, whenever it may occur, um. But also, um. It's a matter of a. Of um. You know, just just good practice and um having external checks and balances, uh. Now, as far as like the money goes, um. We did make an allocation in this year's, in the coming budget for uh. An amount for new software, new budgeting software. Which, just looking at the timeline, the way things are shaping up, as Ray just identified, uh, you know, the current software we have is gonna go. Have an upgrade in October, you know. We haven't had a chance to really uh thoroughly vet any software at all, and the idea of transitioning over. You know, we're just, we're, it's not, I don't, I think the reality is it's not gonna happen this year, we're gonna still have the same software. Going into the next budget cycle, and we're gonna need a, you know, a full year to kind of anticipate. Making any sort of transition, so. There may be some money that could be reallocated. Within this year's budget towards an operational review, um. You know, if needed, if that. Ends up becoming the will of the board.
So Ian, I think there's a budget component to this upgrade. So there may be some funding that's necessary to get the right budgeting tool. And I think we're, well, I think we are um. In E finance for another couple years, is there um? Three years, so we're in a contract with them. So.
And and the the upgrade caught, and I apologize, I didn't mean to up to interrupt you, but the upgrade does is, does have a cost to it, it's about. Roughly nine thousand dollars for the standard upgrade, and then there's a another eleven thousand dollars in uh upgrade cost. Because. Years ago, when the software was implemented. There were many requests for customizations. And when I used to do software implementations, the first thing you tell a client, do not upgrade, do not customize, I mean.
Customize, yeah.
Because if you customize it, I've seen Oracle, and if everybody knows who Oracle is, I've seen it crash for the better part of a week. Because when I worked for Duracell, they thought they were smarter than the people at Oracle. They they did, they customized the heck out of it. It crashed when they pushed out updates. But guess what, we were down for a better part of a week. And they had to go back and redo all those custom updates, so. Anytime we as a board or anytime we move forward with upgrades or new software or new implementations. I highly recommend come with it as it comes out of the package or with very few software upgrades. Or up, uh. So, that that's just. That's just the old man speaking here.
Understood, thank you for that, um. Yeah, so just to 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 um respond there real quick, uh. So that's good information to have, that there's a contract with this software, because um, when we discussed. Possibly changing over the software before, like many months ago, uh. I don't believe that was really emphasized, so. That's important to know.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And so if that contract could be shared with the boards, just so we understand exactly where we stand, uh, that'd be much appreciated. Um, and and. The other matter, um. You know, it's and 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 it would just be good, uh, as we look. At this whole idea of operational review, if we could just get like. A graduated. Schedule of. Possibilities, like a menu of options, right? You know, if we do it internally, it would cost estimated cost to be this much, if you know, if we do it externally. It'd be estimating this much, and you know, what levels of operational review are there, are they different, like, you know, is there just a? A a low end, a mid-grade, or and and then like, you know, super intensive, um. You know, and does that change, what what changes of cost are there, so? Is that something that could be put together pretty? You know.
Depends on the scope, what do you guys want to get out of it? How, what do you want them to read, that that's, that dictates. Again, I I've done consulting. That dictates what my cost is going to be, what I'm going to charge you as the consultant. So uh, Jay was correct there, if I, if you're, if you want me to do a soup to nuts, I'm gonna be here ten months, twelve months, eighteen months. And I'm gonna write that report, but it's gonna cost you.
But again, I think we need to get a new person in the seat.
Oh, definitely.
With you and before we even. Figure out what the scope is, because they'll be able to help us with you, Greg.
They they need to be the person, they're they're the ones that are gonna live with it, whoever you hire. They're the ones, I'll be here to help get them over the hurdle and get them started. But once I'm gone, they're the ones that are gonna live with whatever is decided upon, and they need to be part of that decision as well. So.
Yep, that makes sense, thank you, I just would say that, you know. As part of that conversation, I I would like it to ha- be in everybody's head that. It would be good to have specific numbers, estimates. it would be good to have specific numbers, estimates, and exactly what level of of services or or analysis would come with those different costs. I mean, like you said, Ray, you know, yeah, doing a full stem to stern type approach, that would be very costly and very time consuming. However, you know, I would defer to the professionals to to describe the different levels that are possible. You know, because, you know, I have some concept of all this, but, you know, like you said, you, we want to take our lead from, you know, the professionals that we hired to do the jobs. So I would say, okay, you know, what is the most rigorous? And then like, you know, what's, you know, a couple notches back from that and a couple notches back from that. And like, you know, how many levels of rigor can there be involved with this sort of review? Or, you know, what's done commonly? What's the common practice done in different places? You know, give me some comparative structures, some, you know, some sort of synopsis that could kind of give me a sense of, you know, are we taking the whole ship apart? And then reassembling it? Or, you know, are you just doing like, you know, a bilge crawl and with a flashlight?
I'll, I'll send you what they did in Trumbull. And so you can get an idea of of what that looked like.
And in Ray's opinion, that's like one of the most intense ones you've seen?
That's the only one I've seen. To be honest with you.
But it did look pretty intense.
It was intense. It did. They were there about 10 months, if I'm not mistaken, something like that.
And and you say you don't know the cost offhand of what?
That I, I can, I can probably get the cost.
That would be great. That'd be a great start, just to give us a ballpark figure. So, you know, and then we can kind of work our way backwards from there.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I'm going to recognize Jen and then Bev.
Hi, my only recommendation with the review is that whoever the new business manager, maybe we give them like six to nine months runtime. Because first they need to learn and understand their role and what is currently being put in place. And then maybe they want to make changes themselves to the process and then we could do a full review. So it's almost like a verification of old that they fixed. It's just a thought idea, like I don't necessarily know. And maybe it's up to them, right? But I don't necessarily know if I want them to jump into one when they probably don't even know the role. Yeah, even if they had prior experience in a different district. Each district is different and managed differently.
I agree with you, Jen, and also getting to know the staff that they're working with too, right?
Correct.
And I, I think that's something Ray did recommend, Jen, that we wait until the person got into his job.
Oh, yeah, no, no, but I'm just saying not immediately. I'm more like six to nine months out.
Yeah, I think that's what he was talking about.
Yeah, and I definitely support that. I'm not suggesting that we sign the contract tomorrow. But we do need to to have the discussion just because we've just been through the the audit process. And so that is something that was just sort of brought up. And so we just need to be aware of it. But obviously, it's going to, it's going to be a process. And I, I definitely agree, we need to let the new person get settled in. So, all right. Are there any other questions about that? And if not, so I know Susan, Sam couldn't be here, but I think one of the major questions we had for him was about scoreboards.
So EB had actually, on our visit, they were talking about being able to support the school district because they are a partner of ours. And one of the things they recommended was something on the athletic facility, some kind of scoreboard or, you know, what we needed. So the number of 40,000, 44,000 was put out there, you know, we needed the two scoreboards for the space on Grotten Middle School that's so used. I think it's the softball field and then the turf. And that would really be kind of essential. We had submitted that to John Burt, and he said that it just hasn't gone through all the reviews. And I'm not sure that there's really that much arpsar. And if this is a willing partner to be able to donate these things, then that would be, I think, ideal. So we're still gathering the information. And we can keep you posted. It's an idea. It was a suggestion made and I come to the board before taking this on, but just wanted you to have a heads up. This might be a way to offset costs from the town and the board.
Ian.
Thank you for the update on that. I'm highly appreciative of that information. And that sounds great. I, I hope it works out. And I think that's a win-win situation. So you have my full support. And I would encourage.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so looking at, looking at corporate partnerships, you know, corporate support, sponsorships for all sorts of stuff.
Well, we have policy around it too, in with advertising and everything, but certainly when they're willing to make a donation with no strings attached. So.
Right, right. I guess that's what I meant. It's like more like donation, more, yeah, again, not sponsorship, not putting their signs on everything, but just saying, hey, you know, you know, they, they have a nice home here and they want to help support it.
That's right. Great.
Thank you.
Always looking for those opportunities.
All right. Well, that reaches the end of the agenda. I want to thank you very much for pivoting at the last minute to the online. And again, thank you, Ray. We look forward to your report on the, the timeline that the auditors are going to submit. I'm going to send out links to the Trumbull website for anybody who's interested in that. And
I'll try to get the cost for you, Jen.
Yeah, that, that would be a big help as well. And
Can I just jump in real quick, Jay? I just wanted to piggyback on what Ian was asking for, a definition for each level, like a low grade operational review, what's involved in that, if you know what it is, a mid-grade, what's involved in a mid-grade operational review? And the higher grade. I don't know if you know.
Let me see if I, let me do some digging. This is probably the toughest time of the year to get a lot of that information from my office because we're in the middle of closing out a fiscal year. But let me see what I can find. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
And now I'll recognize Dr. Ackerman.
It's her motion, motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? All right, without, all right, without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.